I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. We, uh, we're gonna call the meeting in order and then we have a one bit of housekeeping to do. We do have a vote we need to take on one item and then we'll go into the town hall meeting. Uh, so we'll call the meeting in order with the prayer by Mayor Pro Tep Sonny Anderson and a pledge by Councilman Dennis, Dr. Dennis.
Most gracious God, we have you Father, we come this evening once again, bow our heads and humble our hearts. Come this evening, oh God, as humble as we know how, and we come thanking you for your many blessings. Thank you, Heavenly Father, for every family that's represented here this afternoon. We pray, Heavenly Father, and we thank you for your son, Jesus, for the precious gift that you gave us through him. And now, Lord, we pray that you would bring us together in one mind and for the same cause. We pray that you would help us, oh God, to make the right decisions together as we come together this afternoon. And we pray that acts in all in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Folks, there's a flag right over that direction, so we'll face that way. It's outside.
The sign looks good.
Ready? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's Dr. Dennis Robertson that did the pledge. I had a squirrel moment there. Okay, so we have a consideration of a resolution supporting submission of a Texas capital fund Main Street application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for sidewalk improvements. Do we have any questions about that? If we have no questions, I'll call for a vote.
We'll make a motion or?
Yeah, we'll get a motion.
We'll make a motion on the other part of the sound. I'm making a motion. We, uh, support the resolution of the submission of the Texas capital fund Main Street application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for sidewalk improvements.
All in favor? Okay. Okay, um, you'll have to bear with me. I had a, uh, a teacher that would really be shocked if they saw me up here talking in front of all you guys. I was always the student when the teacher said, asked the students a question, I immediately put my head down and looked busy. So I didn't want to talk in front of a bunch of people. So, so here we are today. Welcome to the town hall meeting, the second one, here at the Glade Water Library. The reason is that the library is because I'd like everybody to be, uh, recall that the library is here. This is one of our assets. And so by having it here, we bring attention to it. Okay, for the evening, uh, I'm gonna cover some background information. That information is some of, uh, what we discussed at the joint meeting between Gedco, the school board, and the council. Um, I'm then gonna open the floor to discussion. Each person is gonna have three minutes to speak. State your name and Glade Water address. We do want participation from Glade Water residents. If you are not a Glade Water resident, but you have a business in Glade Water, we want, definitely want to hear from you, of course. So, uh, your business name and business address, and, and we sure want to hear from you. Second opportunity, if you have more to say, let's, uh, let's let everybody have a chance to talk, and then we'll come back to you. But we're gonna stop that about eight o'clock. We're gonna, we're gonna shut the town hall meeting down at eight thirty. From eight to eight thirty, there's some additional things we want to cover, one of which is the town hall meeting, one comments, want to share some information from that. Uh, the Glade Water leadership team ideas, okay? So this is a product of what I'm gonna be discussing here. But with respect to both of these items, don't want to lead in with this because we want to hear from you. We don't want someone to not comment because they're thinking, ah, well, you guys have already mentioned it. Really, really want to hear what you, what you have to say. And, um, again, wrap up the meeting at eight thirty. If you have more to say, that's okay. We've got, we've got two more meetings. So if you didn't get a chance to speak, we've got, we've got two more. So the Glade Water leadership team, that's your city council, Gedco, and school board. Um, some of these folks are here tonight. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask these folks to introduce themselves and say a little bit about themselves as well. I do want to point out that, um, these are not paid positions, really. I mean, council gets a hundred dollars a year, a hundred dollars a year for service. Gedco, uh, elected by you guys. Gedco's appointed by, um, council, not paid. School board, again, not paid, uh, elected by you guys. And I, and the reason I'm pointing that out is that, you know, we're doing it because we want to serve you. And, uh, so we're certainly not doing it for the money. But the, uh, there is a frustration in government because you feel like, well, things aren't getting done. Um, and I, there's no way I can, can get things done, you know? But, but there is. You can, you can change the leadership in your community if you're not happy with the way it's going. So you do have a voice, a very loud voice for us in May. So just want to point that out. I also want to point out this. John Rowe, Kilworth College, uh, he participated with us. He is our, our representative over there. He actually represents an area, White Oak, Glade Water, Liberty City. Um, so it could be anybody from one of those communities that has this spot. But we, as Glade Water residents, certainly want to maintain Glade Water representation. So a very important vote for the community of Glade Water. Keep somebody on that Kilworth College board. And then, of course, you have Ricky Tau, Robert Johnson, and Cedric Clark, superintendent of schools, uh, that work with us as well. And I'm gonna start right here with Mayor Pro Tep Sonny Anderson. Let you guys begin to introduce yourselves.
I'm called Billy Nenewan. I'm called Sonny Anderson. My name is Elijah Anderson. I was born and raised in Gilmore, Texas. And I went to school at Bruce High, when it was Bruce High in Gilmore. I left Gilmore in fifty-four and went to Center, Texas. I went down there as a, a cook. And I came back in sixty-two to Glade Water. And I'm sure some of you here might remember Cleo Marlowe. Remember him? Uh, he come got me to be a cook for him down at Green Hut Cafe, remember? Which was a long time ago in sixty-two. And, uh, I've been here, I could say, I think, something like fifty-some years. And, uh, since that time, I went to work, well, I worked for Jack O., after I became a gentleman butcher. That is cutting meat, if anybody don't know what that means. And in saying that, I hope I'm not out of order. I've talked since I have a superintendent from the school is here. If y'all ever get a program up there, I need some lead instructor I can train some. But nevertheless, I retired from, used to be Slits Brewery, which was Strobury in ninety-nine. And I've been, and I decided I wanted to, uh, give some of my time back to the city and join in the city council. And I'm in my third term. And, uh, I am, well, I guess about twenty-nine years old basically.
I'm Dennis Robertson. I'm a professor and administrator over at UT Tyler. Uh, we've been here since nineteen ninety, so we're newcomers. Except for three years up at Arkansas State in the nineties. We've lived in Glade Water. My kids graduated high school here in Glade Water. And, uh, it's, uh, it's our adopted hometown now. We've been here longer than anywhere else we've ever lived. So it feels like home, and we want to do what we can do to help make it a great place to live. Uh, my wife is Janet Robertson. She also works at UT Tyler. So we drive down there together, come home together, eat lunch together. So it's a, it's a pretty good deal in that regard. This is my second term on, uh, on the council. And, uh, that's about it. I'll go over to Quinn.
My name is Quinn Tom. Uh, I studied at Purdue University, uh, got my aerospace engineering degree there. Um, then I moved on to, and went to Sloan School of Management at MIT. Traveled all over the place, worked as a management consultant, wound up in East Texas to start a neurosurgical facility. Um, when funding ran out there, uh, my wife and I talked about it. And we loved being here in East Texas so much that we, uh, we decided to stay. Uh, we bought our first home together in Glade Water off the lake a couple of years ago. And, uh, we really enjoyed being here and look forward to being here more.
My name's Spiro Alexander. I came out here in nineteen ninety. I went to work for the police department. Uh, I worked about five years in law enforcement out, panhandling in West Texas where I was born and raised in the panhandle. Um, anyway, worked through and retired as chief of police in twenty thirteen and got a state out of things. I started in the business of, uh, real estate and, uh, buying and selling properties. And, uh, I wasn't real happy with everything as the way some things were going. And I figured I, and I had the other encouragement, and I decided to run for council. So, uh, I'm here and trying to make as much of the impact as possible. I don't like running people down and, and griping about, uh, stuff. I'd rather just fix it. And do, at least do my part to try to fix it and be a part of a solution rather than a problem. So that's why I got on the city council. My oldest son graduated from Union Grove. My two youngest kids graduated from Glade Water. And, uh, we've been here a long time, probably stayed here. So.
We're used to ten minute talks, Spiro, so I was making sure. My name is Brandy Plantagen. Uh, my husband Scott and our five kids have lived here and had a business here for fifteen years. Uh, most of my time now is spent with business management consulting. And, um, also serve, uh, through bringing the Boys and Girls Club here, um, in Glade Water. So a lot of people know me through that. And, um, I've just have been serving since May along with these two guys. And, um, I'm really excited about where our town is headed. We have a really great team right now. It's really working well together. And, um, it's exciting to have these type meetings where we get to hear from you guys, um, on your views of what you're wanting for Glade Water. So we're all excited that you guys are here tonight. Thank you.
All right. Then we also have, uh, Mr. Robert Green from Gedco here.
Robert Green, good school here in Glade Water. Left in, uh, early seventies, went to service with the college at Stevie M. Austin, came back in the nineties. I had three daughters that, uh, graduated from Glade Water High School. In fact, my oldest daughter, I guess, has been a school teacher here for about fourteen years. And, uh, so I'm, I'm active in the church at Saint James, and I'm an independent investor. And, uh, just happy to help and serve and do whatever I can to, to build a community in the city.
Also like to identify Robert Johnson.
Hello, I'm Robert Johnson. I'm the director of Gedco, and I've, uh, I've been with Gedco since two thousand and eleven. And I'm, like Robert Green, our president just said, happy to, to help to better Glade Water encouraging business development and, uh, skills development and, and, uh, excited about the prospect of these meetings. Would thank, uh, mayorship and the council for having these. I think they're, they've been very informative and productive, uh, thus far.
Then we have Ricky Tau, our city manager, back there.
Back in the corner. Ricky Tau, been here since November, so I'm a new member of all this stuff. So, uh, we're excited to have all this, great turnout and this crowd here today to get y'all's input, to see how to move our city in a direction that, uh, the public is wanting. All this combined together is a great effort. We look forward to it.
And Cedric Clark, superintendent of schools, is here with us as well.
Good evening. I'm Cedric Clark, the very proud superintendent of schools for Glade Water Independent School District in this lab period.
Good deal. Okay. Well, I don't think I've missed any. I've scanned the crowd. I don't think I've missed anybody. Um, so, uh, involvement. Uh, you can run for office. You can also get on a city board. Okay? We've got different boards here. Airport, ballpark, beautification, board of adjustment, cemetery, Gedco, Lake Library, Main Street, Planning, and zoning. So here's another opportunity for you to get involved. We do have board applications here. I think Mrs. Van Houten has them back there. Our city clerk. So, um, another opportunity for involvement. So when we met, what do we want Glade Water to be? That was the question that the Gedco council and, um, school board asked ourselves, what do we want Glade Water to be? Uh, these are some of the things that came up. A bedroom community, a destination, you know, focus on tourism. We do have the downtown, the lake, the ballpark, the airport, all to, um, all to draw from. A retailer industrial hub. We're at the intersection of eighty and two seventy-one, so why not? Same reason up here. Why not? Bedroom community at this intersection. Uh, Dr. Robertson, model city, a progressive community, one which others take notice of what we're doing and say, we want to be like Glade Water. You know, take that leadership approach. Great, great idea. Well, what are the funding mechanisms? So we've got our sales tax revenue. Uh, that's, uh, increased sales tax at local businesses. That would be great. New retail stores, that would be great. That would increase sales tax revenue. Now, uh, I know a lot of us have heard shop local, shop local, shop local. And you may feel that, okay, well, this is supporting local businesses. That's true. It is supporting local businesses. But it's also supporting you. Okay? Because when you go out of town and spend money, you're giving that community sales tax revenue to fix their streets. So by shopping local, you're helping that local business and you're helping you. So very important to think of it that way. Property values, uh, that's another contributor. The, the, the sales tax and property values, this is what helps the city. Uh, property values and school enrollment, that's what helps the school. So it'd be nice to see some new homes and businesses bump the property values. School enrollment, we want existing families to stay here. We want families moving here, too. So it's a circular process. What do we want Glade Water to be? Well, there needs to be a strategy, one which involves infrastructure, community development, economic development, communication. And as we pick a strategy, as we pick something to, to move us forward, we want to make sure it has a positive impact over here. You know? So what, what, what do we want Glade Water to be? What's that strategy? Will that strategy increase funding to get us to what we want to be? Very circular process. So, so that's where we were at the joint meetings. But there was a very important missing component, right? What do we want the people want Glade Water to be? What do you guys think? That's why we're not gonna share what we came up with until later. But we want to know from you guys. What do, what do you want Glade Water to be? And, but, you know, do think of it in this, in this process. So welcome to Operation We the People. That's what we're calling the Town Hall Forums. Glade Water Town Hall Forums is gonna be an annual event for accountability to the future of our community. So we're setting a precedent right here because we're not gonna serve forever. But we're trying to create an expectation amongst you guys that you're gonna see a council with a town hall meeting every October. That probably won't be four, but maybe next year will be one. Maybe it'll be two. But, but that's, there's gonna be that expectation that, that we create so that there's that accountability. So you can't go back and change the beginning, but you can start where you are and change the ending. That's what this is about. There's nothing we can do about the beginning, but we can start right now and move forward, make those necessary changes. So let's talk. Um, what do you want Glade Water to be? That's the question we're asking. However, you may have your own comments, and that's, that's fine. That's fine. It's been a long time since we've had a town hall meeting, so we want to hear from you. The one thing that I, I do, I do request is, oh, I, I, if, if you're gonna talk, I want to hear what you love about Glade Water. Because how would you sell a friend or family member on coming to Glade Water? So I'd ask that of you, if, if you, if you will be speaking. Maybe give us an idea. It could be a one-word answer, family, or it could be whatever it is that, that really impresses upon you that this is a great community in which to live. Uh, went over this before earlier, three minutes to talk. State your name and Glade Water address. Want, you'll, uh, move in the rotation as we go to the next person. If you have something you want to say again, you gotta wait till everybody else speaks. But again, if you want to say something more, that's fine. We've got two more chances, two more town hall meetings. So we'll start. Anybody want to speak?
I will.
Sure. Name and address, please.
My name is Violet Melton. I live at four oh six North Berry Street. And I've lived here in Glade Water since, uh, nineteen ninety-one. So I'm a newcomer, too, among the Tennessee. I like where you said, was shop local. And during the time I have lived here in Glade Water, other than when I wanted an antique, or when I didn't want to go into Longview for just a shopping trip, if I wanted to buy a piece of furniture that wasn't antique, or if I wanted to buy a piece of clothing, I'd go into Longview or Tyler to do so. Now I'm older, my mobility is compromised. Um, I have stopped shopping at Walmart simply because it's hard for me to get there. I shop at grocers. I take advantage of all the, the sales and the discounts and things. But like today, I wondered what was I gonna wear here tonight? I don't work anymore. I retired two years ago. So I haven't bought any new clothes. But I think if I had a place here in town to shop, I would've gone and bought a new outfit to wear tonight. But I sure didn't want to go into Longview to do it. But my major shopping here in town, and I'm not by myself, there are a lot of old people here. I mean, present company experience. But my shopping consists of going to the grocery store, going to the drugstore, and that's about it. If I want anything else, I either, I have to admit that I'm a big Amazon shopper now, and they bring it right to my door. So Glade Water's going to have to have some things. If they want me to shop local, to any amount, they're gonna have to give me someplace to shop. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Yeah, yes, ma'am. Name and address.
Hi, um, I'm Cheryl Ruttner. I'm relatively new here. We semi-retired in Glade Water from the Metroplex in July of twenty seventeen. Uh, what brought us here? We knew we could find a job in Longview or Tyler. We are right in the middle. Fortunately, we made the transition quite well. I work for a CPA firm in Longview, and my partner manages a fat dog. Um, what I like about Glade Water, it's not the Metroplex. I can go to grocers. I can shop locally there. I've learned to enjoy our dollar stores. And what I would like to see happening in Glade Water is for it to be a clean, safe community. Because there are thousands of people like me in the Metroplex who can sell our houses at the top of the market in Dallas and come here and live well in this community. But to attract people like us, we're going to need a clean, safe community. Um, and we'll come in, we bought an older home that we're fixing up and redoing, bringing it back to the way it was. But those things are important. You know, ladies day out, things like that could attract some of my girlfriends here from the Metroplex, get them to see our community. Um, we don't bring families, but we bring a lifetime of experience and our retirement savings with us where we can live well and not have to fight traffic on six thirty-five.
I'd like to, uh, I feel like my back's to most people, so I'm gonna stand right at the. I'm Perry Connor. I'm at one oh one South Pine Street, Sunbelt Manufacturing. We came to Glade Water September of twenty seventeen because of Gedco. So I'd like to praise Robert Johnson, Robert Green, and Ricky Tau. Uh, so bringing people to Glade Water, I think Gedco did a phenomenal job bringing us here from Longview. Uh, my father owned this company from, from eighty-two. So this is an older company. And we, we were in ten thousand square feet, uh, up until a year ago. Now we're in twenty-six thousand square feet. And I see us building, building onto that, Lord willing. Uh, one of the things that we weren't real impressed about, and once Ricky found out about this, things started to happen, was some of the zoning. And, uh, there was a sprinkler system in the building next door to us that we were, that we were hoping to close on. We've been trying to close on it for, for about a year now. And, uh, the issue there was, I think, the fire department saying, well, it needs to stay. Uh, it's a wet system. It's actually a dry system. After a year of that, it's a dry system. Uh, every time I would call Robert, uh, he would get on the phone and try to call, let's get this going, let's get this going, let's get it back on the tax roll. Hadn't been on the tax roll in fifteen, twenty years.
It's Gedco-owned.
It's Gedco-owned. We've closed on one of the buildings. We're ready to close on the other building. And that's one of the things that we've seen, that, that it's been hard for a new business owner. Uh, but really, why I'm here is to praise Gedco because they are bringing companies here. They're doing a really good job at it. Um, Ricky, I believe, he started in the, the end of twenty seventeen. But once he found out about it, things started to happen. So, uh, like I said, I'm Perry with Sunbelt, and we're new to Glade Water. Glad to be here. Uh, everybody's been pretty nice to work with. But that's one of the things I wanted to share with you guys as city council.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Nick. Let's get going. I'm in twenty-one oh three, oh three, uh, out there in SLA, near Crosswalk Park. Um, I wanted to kind of piggyback off of what you said. I've only been here several years, not, not a lot. And, uh, so the one thing that, the clean that we were talking about, and I brought this subject up to the Speak group, that's the Facebook group, which is awesome. I love the ability to be able to bounce ideas off of others. So if you haven't joined that group, please find me. It's on Facebook, Speak Up Group. Um, we wanted to see about getting trash cans, the actual big blue trash cans from Republic. Um, or not Republic, I'm not sure. We would rent, I mean, honestly, I would rent, not be no problems. I've tried renting directly from them, but they said the city has to rent them out. It's a big, long process. So that would really help my neighborhood a lot because all of our guys just have trash cans built up, piled up trash, and they're not being able to, I've gone through probably four or five trash cans because they either get hit by the, you know, by the, uh, trash guy that, you know, drops them or bobs them or whatever. So it just really cleaned it up. That would help tremendously with this area. You've got one big box and all the trash is in there. It's not all over the place for water and this and stuff. So, thank you guys for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna stand over here and chat.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Tina Omdal, and I live at twenty-two oh one Pine Crest. Um, I teach school here. And I would like to see, um, more positive, uh, what the community sees about the school. I want a more positive. It seems like all we ever hear is the negative about what the school does. And so I would like to see more, um, more positive things of what we do and not just always the negative. And to get the word out that, yes, things do happen, but, um, that the school can and does. And I love the school. I love Mr. Clark. And, um, I love Glade Water. I've been here for five years. My kids are in school here. And, um, I, I was in a bad school district before, so coming here was a really good blessing. I love the, the people here. The, the church that I attend is wonderful. And I just feel like, um, we could just get the community more aware of the positive things that the school does and not just always the negative things. And I know negative things happen, but it would be nice to see positive things. And to get a, a better, you know, the first time something negative happens, everyone gets on Face, Facebook and put it out there. And I just think that maybe we should have something positive, get it out there, too. Instead of always just the negative. And, um, just, like, change the community. Because if you ask people have a bad view of the school, and if we're going to attract people and keep people here, then that's something that we're gonna have to change, is the community's perception of what teachers do and what the school does. And, um, so that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Tina, how do you spell your name?
O-N-D-A-H-L.
That's something that I think as a council that we, all of us in these group meetings that we did, that is actually something that was a big topic with us, is really getting, and one of the main reasons why mayorship did this, um, is because we wanted to start getting community buy-in to our city, to our school, to Gedco, to, to our entities here, to where, um, if there's a concern, you know who to go to instead of blasting it all over Facebook. Because it doesn't just stay in our small community. It goes out to everyone. And if we don't feel positive about our city, how are we going to communicate to where people want to come into our city, or want to go to the school, or want to bring their businesses here? So.
To bring families here.
Right. So we really. Right, so we really, you know, it's one thing that we really desire, um, with Glade Water leadership team, is to get that community buy-in, um, of us promoting the city. And going, we all know that there's issues, I mean, no one's perfect, and no entity is ever perfect, but we can handle those things directly, we don't have to go, you know, blasting all over the place, so, I love that you brought that up, thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Andrew Thomas, I live at two-two-six Hole, uh, right there at Teteri, before you get to Gay Avenue. Um, I'm fairly new to the city, but I'm actually, I have my, my kids here in this town, my daughter just started pre-K, so we're new. Um, I'm from Overton, my wife born and raised here, so, uh, I'm here now, and what attracted, or, you know, we could've moved anywhere, you know, uh, but, look, we have a lake that is amazing, you actually could actually ride a boat on it, you know, the town, we have ponds, you know? Um, we have that, we have a huge school, so, you know, and from what I read in the newspaper, which I don't, I'm, I'm one of the rare few, I don't have a Facebook, I, all my information I get from the Glade Water newspaper, and it's gotta be one of the best, but, um, you get, you got that, which gives it a big city feel, but you still got, you know, I know my neighbors, but I don't know who lives on the other side of town, you know? You still got a big city inside this small little thing, eighty and two seventy-one, that we could be the, a major hub for something, you know, between Pittsburgh and the chicken farms to Tyler, you know, you either got Gilmore or Glade Water, and it's, wish, it should be us. I mean, I'm not saying we need a Walmart and all that, but we do need, like the lady said, I, I gotta go to Longview to get clothes for my kids, you know, unless I want them, you know? Most of them are in uniforms, and it's hard to find uniforms, and if there, if there's only one or two places wearing them, I'm sorry, I don't like speaking in front of people. But, um, I mean, I love, I mean, the history of the town, it's always had a little rough side to it, but it, it always meshed and melted and made it Glade Water, you know? You got the Opry, you got the rodeo, I mean, this is stuff most towns don't have access to, you know? We, just, the future for this town could be amazing, but, I mean, the council can't do it, like you said, y'all aren't gonna be here forever. If we're relying on the council, you know, like, two years from now, four years from now, it's completely different, you know, they may, you know? So, that's one of the, I like this town, we love this town, uh, there's a lot we could do better, uh, animal control, you know? We got stray dogs and cats, I mean, one cat or two for our neighborhood is all right, but I got pit bulls running around, and the police can't do anything, because they haven't attacked anybody, and then they told me to catch it, to take it to the pound. If I get close enough to that, they're gonna shoot it. I mean, and then if I shoot it on the street, I lose my gun, you know? I can't, they start to fire on me. And, uh, so, yeah, from what I understand, we only have two or three officers on duty at a time anyways, is that right? I mean, we got a town this big, we, something needs to be done with that, either, either we need more, or, you know, I don't know if you can have, like, part-time police officers, or if that works out, but, if we're wanting to, to clean the city up on the legal side of it, you need more than two or three officers, because if one person's dealing with something, you know, one's gotta be ready to take care of the jail if there's somebody there, it's just, in the fire department, you know, in the paper, they said they only got a couple people on shift every day, and it's, they're maxed out, I mean, why can't we get volunteers? Uh, I've been in Overton, and I got nothing else to do, I was waiting for that pager to go off.
They're actually accepting volunteer applications.
I've flown by name in there four times too. I still haven't got the chief to call me back, I sent, I found email thing, I got a smartphone now, so, um, yeah, I sent them an email, I've been up there, but it's not, for me, it's just for the community, it's, you get somebody that's got nothing else to do, and they could go put out a grass fire, that's, that's a whole day and a half of fun, you know? It really is, if you've ever done it, it's fun. I mean, and, that would get more people involved, and just seeing one or two new faces a month, get better, you know, build your circle up, and you don't have to do the Facebook, you know, and smear it, because you know the person, you know? That's all I gotta say.
That's pretty good.
Well, those are some good ideas on, uh, animal control, because we are run over with cats, and they get in the flower beds, and all that, and also like the trash, to get it picked up, because it's hard to volunteer to go pick up trash by the highway, I know that, because somebody has the whole trash can, the dog's been there, or something has, but, I'm Jan Greenwood, and we have Greenwood's Christmas Store, and we believe in lo- uh, shopping local, we live at four twenty-eight North Main, and I think what I would like is when, uh, like some of the Texas magazines come to town, the only thing that's ever is just a few antique stores, but we've got The Butterfly now, we've got The Screen Door, an old-fashioned place, we're the only year-round Christmas store in East Texas, and, uh, we have Darla's, that does have clothes there, and some shoes, and candles, just all kinds of gifts, and it's really getting diversified now, and we try to get more people to come in and to participate. And, uh, we've got the Dollar Stores, we've got Goodwill, and, uh, Garage Sales, I mean, there are some things, you can get some things here, if you don't want just brand-new expensive stuff. I personally like, uh, the Dollar Tree, I like Goodwill, I like Garage Sales, and things like that. And I would like to see when magazines or something come into town, that they, uh, include everybody here, list them. They may not have to say, like Greenwood's, but they can say a year-round Christmas store, ice cream shop, bed and breakfast, and it'd be wonderful. I know we advertise over TV, we advertise in, uh, newspapers, and encourage people to pick up the local newspaper, they'll see what's going on, uh, in Glade Water, and hopefully they'll volunteer. And, right now, we're struggling, but we're wanting to like the dairy. So, if we haven't asked you to contribute to like the dairy, you can go to City Hall tomorrow and write your check.
That's right.
And we need the money.
Almost there, we're almost there.
You can see it from two seventy-one to eighty, coming in from all directions, and we want it done by, is it November the tenth? For our open house down in Glade Water. Thank you.
Ms. Jan, Ms. Jan, on the part about, um, when the newspapers come to town, get with the chamber, that's who you need to get with, because when they come into town, I'm sure that who they go to is our Chamber of Commerce, so get with them, and, and talk to them about making sure that they include all of the downtown.
It's been done before.
Okay.
That's your contact person.
Mr. Jones?
I think this is the one, the one for meeting, and I'm really enthusiastic, I would tell you, I came in, I'm a native of Glade Water, and I started out in coaching, and I moved, I was born and grew up in Glade Water, so, pretty much, Glade, Glade I don't know, but, uh, I started out in coaching, and moved here, and pretty much, uh, kinda, kinda hungry, wasn't making the four thousand dollars a year, I couldn't reach out and do something. So I came to Glade Water, I went into some business people here in town, and we formed a partnership and built Glade Lanes, a boat and that, the City Hall now, they bought it, um, you know, but, uh, I started out, Chamber of Commerce, you know, there's a few places, I did a little bit of road, kind of doing what y'all are doing, but, small way, didn't have a, at that time, we just didn't have that many interested people. But anyway, uh, after I got out of the boat and that business, I became a shuttle play gamer, in the keg for twenty-nine years, and then, during that time, I developed Glade Water National Bank with some organization. So I've been involved heavily in everything that you've been talking about, but I haven't been able to do a lot of things that I would like to do in Glade Water, but, so I'm really enthusiastic about what you all are doing. Uh, now, what I want to ask you all tonight, we have a film down Lee Drive, and stop at eighty, and have to wait five or ten minutes to get out. I mean, that's one of the headless traffic spots in town. We just got a new bank in town, and it's gonna increase, so we're asking you all to help us, the city, uh, and want to rob, about bad people to help, and, uh, but we need, we need to get a red light there, in the worst way, that the patrol's attracted. So, anyway, I can say again, I'm proud to see all of y'all here, and it's really lifted me up to see y'all do this.
Uh, I want to comment on what you said, Mr. Jones, at one time, uh, that's when I first come to Glade Water, that's one of the green hut favorite right there on that corner, there was a red light there, I don't, I don't know why it's not now, because right across the street, there was a little fruit stand, and, uh, that, that light was there. And I have to say, it is very well needed.
Pretty sure that's a text-out issue, isn't it?
It's gonna be bad till the eighty's finished anyway, no matter what, how many red lights you put in, as long as they have two lanes, it, the traffic backs up past Whiteoof someday, so...
They did it a certain amount a few years ago, but I think it's time for an annual launch.
Yeah, it's still busy there, even on the whole road.
Robert, you ready?
Just, just to, uh, Robert Johnson, Director of Getco, just to, to chime in on Mr. Jones' part, to remind the council, we, when Tyco moved in on Pacific, and Breco was already there, we, we didn't want them driving their trucks through downtown, so we also made Lee Street, you know, when Paul Japp was here, we looked at the turn rate is, and the trucks could make that turn, so we designated that for those local deliveries, that the, the egress, um, uh, for trucks, uh, it might add extra weight to putting a light, uh, there with text-out, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Is it related to this? You're coming, you're related to the life, decorate it.
Well, when I was talking, I forgot one of the newest things in Glade Water, it's The Bird's Nest. They have a venue, and it's arts and crafts, all kinds of gifts, so shop local.
Aunt Ma and sister.
It's a commercial thing.
Yeah, it's not...
For, by trip as well, that's, they don't have to go to Longview and level that while you're sitting.
Okay, my turn.
There you go.
I dream really, really, really big, so get ready for a big dream. Um, I, I try to think of ways to bring people into town. My big dream, just dream with me, please, I want to do a living history village, where we bring the children into town, we do the village, our history's gonna die if we don't preserve it. Glade Water is full of history, like Mr. Jones, and Mr. Phillips, and everybody else that has helped grow, uh, Glade Water, it is going to disappear. If we don't try to start doing something like that, then, uh, it's gone. So if I've got my eye, and have had for the last three years, on some pieces of property, but I'd kind of like to keep it, um, as close to the center of Glade Water as we can, if we get the visitors down here with school-aged children, then we can get their moms, and their daddies, and their aunts, and their uncles, and their grandmas, and their grandpas, and everybody else. So there's a whole bunch of revenue that we can bring into town, and we can start real simple. You know, I'm thinking a donkey, and some chickens, and some houses, and a church, and things like that, and we can just keep building on that. I have a lot of friends, like, I have a teacher friend, and she's a historian, and she's in, uh, a van, and she has a school on her property, and she has said, Lola, I will help, I do this, I teach this for a living, and she brings children on her property. You can even bring busloads of children in, and charge like so much per child, and that brings your revenue in, and then they go home and they tell their parents, and then they bring their parents back. So that's my big dream, and I know it's a big dream, but it's an attainable goal, if we all pitch in together, and we share the dream together, and we, we just do it, I know we can, but we, we, it, it's gonna take a lot of engineering and a lot of money, and, um, just, um, you know, everybody getting together.
Something that runs a parallel, would you like to...
You're on that as well.
Okay, tell me, tell me.
So, uh, during one of our, uh, joint meetings, uh, I threw out the idea of bringing the community together, and Resurrecting Sitting on a Woodbine, uh, which is, uh, for those that don't know, is a play that, that, uh, the city used to do, um, that celebrated the rich history of Glade Water, um, and in my opinion, something like that would really bring, bring the city together, it would develop a sense of cooperation amongst everyone, uh, it would be a great way to celebrate our past, um, and definitely treasure the history that, that we have here. There's a, a city in Georgia, uh, that did this, they put on a play called Swamp Gravy, and, uh, and it actually turned out to be a great success, uh, I believe they've traveled to the White House, they've been on Broadway, all of that, it's generated seven and a half million dollars of revenue a year, um, in direct and, in direct and indirect spending for the city. But above all that, uh, aside from the economic benefits of it, I really think that having a way to celebrate the past, um, would be, would be terrific, because if, our, our logo says, uh, "Treasuring the Past, Embrace the Future," so let's, let's do one of those for sure.
Right, right, and I know who has the original woodbine.
Uh, the mayor, actually.
I got a coffee.
If we can sign the VCR...
Yeah, I would have to, uh, and also, the, the, and for any of you that have not been to the Christmas Open House, where we kind of celebrate what Glade Water is and everything, November the tenth, from five to nine, you can go through all the businesses downtown, and see some of the history, the beautiful buildings, and things like that, and get to know what some of these businesses are, like The Bird's Nest, like The Greenwood's, like, uh, uh, the, the, any of the malls down there, or anything, and see what we have, like, in the paper, it mentioned that we need a coffee shop, we have a coffee shop down, downtown, like, we need a boutique, we have a boutique downtown. So if you come downtown, and you get to know what's downtown, you'll see that we have a lot of it down there.
As far as the history stuff, I mean, we've got the museum, I mean, I mean, if we're gonna do something like that, there's gotta be a way to tie them into, because they've already got everything.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I learned both everything I knew from this town through that, you know?
The museum is important to keep, for that history, but when the kids get to put hands on, and live it, and breathe it, and, and, I think it's real important.
Right, I just don't wanna leave them out, because it's a great place.
Never, never.
Do you want to contribute something to this?
Uh, I think her name is Memory at the Walker, um, she, yeah, she did the, I went to it two weeks, two Saturdays ago, where she took everybody downtown to share the history, like the ghost stuff of it, yes, which was very, I did not know all the history about Glade Water, until I went with that, and that, I mean, they were refining it, because it was the first time, but I think that, I mean, if you're into spooky, you know, and, um, ghost things and the stories that she was telling, I mean, it has made, when I look at things now, I'm like, I would've never thought that before, and, um, I thought that was a really good idea, and, and when I was, like, telling my kids about it, that my kids were, like, so excited, and I thought, well, that, you know, get kids that, you know, because kids are in to things like that, and I thought that was wonderful, just to tell the history, I mean, she was telling the history as we were walking around town, and, I mean, it was at night, you know, so we all had our flashlights out, and we're walking around the downtown at night, and I thought that was wonderful, yeah.
She does have a daytime walking brochure, too, where our guests can come and walk during the day, yeah, so that was a really good idea. And two more Saturdays for the Ghost Walk.
Okay, two more Saturdays for the Ghost Walk.
I could just add one other thing, I was in such a hurry before to tell you, I need a place to buy a new dress, but I forgot to do that. I would like to send you, um, honor your request that we say something positive about Glade Water. I grew up in the Metroplex and then my husband and I moved to Los Angeles. And then we moved from there to Phoenix. And when we got ready to retire, we moved back to Glade Water. Because we didn't wanna move back to the Metroplex, because in all of the other places we had been, you go out to run errands and you avert your eyes, first of all, you don't know anybody, you don't wanna know anybody. And in Glade Water, to give you an example, I met Friday, who runs some errands, and I went to CVS to get a blue shot. There were about six other people waiting there to get a blue shot and, you know, it takes forever. And before we left, we were all fast friends. And I can't even go to the post office and get back in a hurry. I can't go to Brookshire's and get back in a hurry, because I see everybody I know and they stop and visit me. That's what I want, on what's going on in town. So, it's, that's the good thing I enjoy about Glade Water. And I have said to many of my friends, and I'm in a Facebook group, that I have a group of ladies from all over the country. And they live in big towns and little towns. And they are amazed when I tell them how things are when I go out to run errands in Glade Water. That I don't get back in a hurry, but it's not because it takes me so long to run my errands, it's because I have to visit with everybody I know. And that's what I like about Glade Water.
And Mayor, I'd just like to tell everyone, he brought up to speak up Glade Water earlier. And once I got on the council, I handed that over and Ms. By is who is the administrator of that town. So, she's who, she's had many years in, uh, city service and understands all the workings, so she's who you speak to when you ask all the questions.
Yes, I cut a lot of people's water off out in the north seats.
Would anybody else like to, uh, speak?
Yes, sir. Uh, Wayne Shaw, uh, I had to walk all the way around one building here to get from my place over there in the pizza place right over there, uh, West Pacific Pizza, one of Matt and Carla's projects in an earlier life.
That's right.
That we, we're still trying to keep it going. The thing I love about Glade Water is whenever people mention things, we just grin and go, yeah, we know. They, they talk about the oil field, go, yeah, that started right over there. They talk about Elvis, go, yeah, he stayed right over there. They talk about Johnny Cash, yeah, he wrote songs when he was here. That's the great thing. It's also, I've lived here when I was, not when I was born, 'cause I wasn't that lucky. My dad was a roaming salesman, so I was in Louisiana, Arkansas, Texas, Oklahoma, all over the place. But this is the first place I love that I remember being a kid and coming into town. And we moved from a littler place in Arkansas, this was a big town when we got here. We had JCPenney's, we had the Oklahoma Tire and Supply, Western Auto, and all, you can still buy the same exact things then, 'cause now they call them antiques. When I was a kid, they were brand new. Now they're antiques and you can buy them in the same store sometimes. And everybody in these businesses knows that and they know where Glade Water is and they come see us for that reason. So, we're happy to see them. I'm happy over in the pizza place, they wonder, they go, they told me that was a local pizza place. Well, you know, they didn't figure that out, they were just wandering around. That lady right there told them. She said, hey, if you're gonna get some food, there's pizza right over there, or there's a burger right over there. Everybody knows where things are, we know each other, and we tell people, here's where you gotta go. We need more places like that. I know in a past life, some of our city council mayors, the bedroom community was the only thing. We were proud not to have a Walmart, proud not to have a McDonald's, proud not to have those big places, 'cause that would ruin our community. Well, those places would also pay for the streets in front of them buildings that are tore up now, because that's a lot of sales tax that we, we turned away. I don't wish any of my friends at Brookshire's or anywhere else, but you gotta compete to stay, you gotta do what you gotta do. And the city has a little bit kind of fought away from, we pushed prosperity away sometime, maybe a little bit. But we're listening, talking and doing this now. Where in the past, it was kind of two, three guys went and did this stuff and you, you heard about it when you saw it happening. Hey, look, they paved the street, what did that happen? Well, all right, the pothole's gone. So, the big thing to me is we gotta keep the good, not bury it, throw it away or tear it up. And, uh, just a little talk we had the other day out in the pavilion about, do we need the street lights over there on Commerce? And everybody kinda went, well, we kinda need the sidewalks, you're gonna walk down under those street lights, but we have to worry about that. And, uh, to me, that's what we're doing. The rest more is starting to look like it did when Elvis stayed there. And, uh, the first time I was back in Glade Water, I made the trip to, I stayed and lived in three of the four biggest cities in the country. Skip New York, lived in LA, Chicago and Houston at different times in my life. I come back here, me and my brother-in-law Dwight Day are driving down the road and there's a guy broken down right in the middle of two seventy-one North, right about the grocery, the old grocery store. What do we do? We pull over, we pile out, get behind the car, start pushing. Before we get him off the road, two more cars are pulled over and the six of us push him off over the side of the road. Somebody offers to give him a ride down to the gas station and then we go on about our business. 'Cause that's what we do in Glade Water. We help each other, we're around for each other, and that's what we gotta keep doing. That's it.
Anybody else like to? Yes, ma'am.
I'm in the park, I'm in four sixteen, that's mine, I have two floors downtown in the antique district. And I feel like I need to kinda stand up for the antique district somewhat tonight, since everybody's talking about everything else. But they're quite, most of us own our buildings down there, and we're proud of our downtown area. We work hard to maintain them, we work hard to keep our customers alive. And we attract people, not just locally, but we attract out-of-town money, believe their sales tax and their dollars in Glade Water. About ninety percent of our business comes from not only just out-of-town, but out of state. And we've met people from three, two different countries, three different countries, including Germany this last month, and from several mini-states. And that is, that's the basis of our business and we're proud of our stores.
Well, well, don't go with that, when they're in town, they come back.
Mm-hmm, they come back.
Uh, the folks from Germany were over having food for this and I, I've got on my phone and talked, they're actually Swiss, some of them, and they were talking French and German. I got on my phone and spoke East Texas French and German to them. And they didn't run away, they ate. But I have customers that, a couple, a gentleman I know lives in Henderson, and every time he swings anywhere near Glade Water, he calls us on the phone and says, give me some pizzas, and he swings through and gets them. But I have more customers that come through about once a month or so, because they came to see you, they came to see you, and they came to see you and they said, we're gonna get something to eat while we're here. And those folks are, some of them seem to be coming a little more regularly, so if we can just keep the place, you know, like I said, we're trying to say polish it up and fix the good and, I mean, keep the good and fix the not as good. We'll just keep seeing those guys and like I said, they're bringing us our, their sales taxes and they get to stay.
You can be placed around in place.
That's right.
They buy food, they buy gas, they stay at the dinner breakfast, they stay at the motel, they stay at RV Park. We like our towners to come in and visit too.
Uh, my name's Scott Owens, uh, two hundred Maple here in Glade Water. Uh, you know, we're a real diverse group of people here in this room here, a lot of different backgrounds, almost just hometown. I've been here a little over forty years myself. What I like about that is it gives us a sense that we're all in this together. And then when we see it, somebody like By is talking about when he going to the post office or he going to the grocery store, you're sitting next to Margaret here and you find out about her loss, we all care about each other, because we're in it together. We may not all always like each other, but that's okay too. I think we all care about each other and, and that we want to be the best that, uh, we could be. One of the things that we're talking about, Margaret's talking about bringing people in from out of town, that, that revenue's important. I know one of my, uh, recent investments, uh, in a restaurant, that I bought the building, I don't operate it, uh, Cat and Little Cowboy out here, I do do the karaoke on Tuesday night and we ran a contest, and it sounds crazy, okay?
So, we don't, that's not to go in?
There even no costume.
We brought in a lot of out-of-town folks. We had people, uh, we had one lady coming in from Moncks, Hatching, we had several from Texicana, we had multiple ones from Tyler, uh, Longview. Uh, we had more coming in from out of town than we did here in town and then the last night.
How many left in Glade Water?
Ma'am?
How many left in Glade Water?
Oh, only when I say. But, you know, that, that, that is important, bringing, bringing those in. And, and each one of us has a, has a place, uh, uh, in doing, doing that. But that's what I really like about Glade Water, is the small town and visiting with somebody when I go to the grocery store and finding out something about them, because we're in it together and we care for each other. Now, one of, a lot of what we've talked about here tonight, I, I, in my opinion, has been what the quality of life stuff is for, for Glade Water. And, and, and JD's circle that he had up here, it all comes back and we all know it, we've all got the wants of what we wanna do, but then we're all talking about how do we get there. And part of the, the evil of it is, I guess, is the money. How do we get there, uh, to do that? And one of the, one of the issues is make things as streamlined as we can on it. And the council has cut and cut on things as much as they can. Getco has brought in something like you've talked about, uh, the industrial deal. Uh, Mr. Green had put out there on Facebook a long, long list of things that Getco has done, uh, with the city that were all quality of life stuff. And I think there needs to be a change in that and it's our, all of us as a city, our citizens, it's our money to say how it's spent. And there's a basic change that I think we really need to educate ourselves about, to be able to change it from an strictly an industrial type of corporation, where we're trying to, uh, bring these jobs in. The jobs are nice, but we've been doing it for about twenty years and we've had some success. And this is one of the best successes right here that's able to come up with. But for the amount of money spent on administrative of it, I think it would be better to bring it in to a four B corporation so that we can streamline it and be able to cut, uh, the administrative costs. I think, uh, probably we're spending about a hundred thousand and I think that could be cut in half on administrative costs and bring it in and make it easier for the city to deal with.
Thank you.
You know, the argument about A and B, that thing going on there since the chicken laid the egg. And a lot of the speaking points that you hear on there, the things from the whole law in two thousand and five. The only advantage to A B is it allows the city to spend money on municipal, uh, endeavors and infrastructure a lot easier. Uh, but what it also does, it does hurt bringing business in, because it takes about a six-month window that, uh, that has to be posted and y'all go through these procedures before you can even sign a contract with the business. And so, I think if you look, there's no project that the city has asked us to participate in, that Getco wasn't an active part in it. We haven't ever turned the city down one time. We participated, we just got through doing a project downtown, painting a pump jack. I think most of y'all have, have seen this. So, one thing I would like to say is that the biggest asset in Glade Water is you. It's the citizens of Glade Water. And I keep hearing it over and over again, and sometimes we get steered away into other things and we get, get drawn into different things, but, but the citizens of Glade Water are the greatest asset. And I'm, I'm gonna tell you something, I am so motivated and, and so enthusiastic at the leadership Glade Water has. And I, I've gotten a chance to work with them, with Mr. Clark and the school board, and we're working on a continuing education process and, and doing some things for kids and youth that, that aren't necessarily going to college, but may wanna get into the medical field and, and different areas. And, and Mr. Clark has really been great with that, Mr., uh, Dr. Lightfoot and, and John, uh, Ushry and, uh, John Kellon, sorry. But I've gotten to know the, the, the city council and, and the mayor and the school board, and these are some really great people. And I think it's really a great thing that they opened this up and they, and, and, and one of the things I keep hearing over and over again about, uh, is about where the citizens wanna go. And you know what? The things y'all are saying really are the same things that, that were talked about in the meeting. And so, I don't, I hate for us to get sidetracked on different things. If you look, you'll see later on in the, in the deal, Getco is, is working on a marketing strategy right now for the city. And we're, we're basing it not on what's happened in the past, but where we're going in the future. And, and, I mean, you can always look back at the past and point fingers, but you know what? We're moving forward. We're not looking back, we're not gonna let things, all the arguments of the past hinder us. We're moving forward and you know what? You can either get on the railroad and move down the track, or you can stay, stay where you at. And there's some really good ideas, uh, uh, and one thing, I know I'm talking too much, but I gotta leave here in a minute, so. The, the woman that got up and spoke about the school, we have a great school system. And I'm not saying that 'cause my daughter teaches it. I don't care, anytime you have a, a, a business or you're in a school system or what it is, there's always people that are gonna point things out. They're always gonna point things at the negative. And one thing I like about this meeting tonight, the majority has been really positive. Now, that's not to say that if something's not right, you don't need to bring it up, because there's things that the city council and the school board and Getco that we need to hear. Because we need to know if there's a problem, if there's something we need to work on. And, uh, a lot of times in meetings, people just come in and they attack folks and they just, they just attack them and they're negative. And a lot of times I found those people have never really discussed it with, with the city council members or with Getco. And they never come, I, I, very few people have ever come to me, I don't think you've ever come to talk to me anything about Getco operations. And, and so, a lot of times you can eliminate a lot of problems by just going and talking to people. But we're all in the same team and you, and we're all working for unity and we want Glade Water to be the best city it can be. And I think we've got the people in place, place to do it. We need the citizens to get on board behind us and get, well, I won't be quiet now. I'm not much of a talker, but you gotta be careful when you let me get inside.
But one other thing, I forgot what I was gonna say, the reason I came, housing, that was the big one. Uh, when I moved to town, I was living in the Resmore. You know, that was my first experience with Glade Water, I was in the Resmore. I got out of there, moved to North Street, you know? But to find a reasonable house that you don't mind raising a family in and finding an affordable house is two completely things in this town, two different things. You can't have both in this town. It's hard to find rental houses that are decent enough to raise your family in. And if you find one, they want two months' salary for it, you know, to rent, you know? And there, if, if we're gonna have certain companies own a hundred and something properties in town, that, the city's gotta step in. I mean, if somebody doesn't want, I, I don't care what you live in, that's, that's your home. Whatever you want it to be, if it's trashy, that's, that's yours, it's fine. But some, like, elec- electrical issues, that's safety issues, you know? That doesn't matter, that's not a lifestyle thing, that, you know, if your house catches on fire, your neighbor's house is gonna catch on fire. You know, that stuff that the city's gotta, or, I don't know who, city manager?
That's supposed to.
I know, I know it's supposed to be done.
It's happening, it's happening, they, the city has stepped in.
They have, okay. I'm, I'm saying that you drive around town and, you know, I'm not even saying trashy properties, it's, it's internal stuff, you know? The safety issues that I don't think are being one hundred percent addressed.
Well, we, uh, we, the only way we can get in, the, and Al, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the only way we get inside a home is between, uh, leases or renters. Uh, so then, then we were allowed access to do a, a safety inspection of the home.
Right.
Uh, but prior to that and prior to our ordinance that we passed, we did not have that ability. But now, now, now we can.
I bought a house now, so.
Well, it was all the reason, I mean, it was, uh, what, a year ago or so?
Yeah, I saw it in the papers, the, the, uh, but I know when I moved into my first two places, I mean, I had walls in the floor. I, and I've only been here five years, so it's three out of four houses have been bad.
Is that something that a person moved in can ask for?
Well.
They ask you, they say, can you, can you get me a occupancy permit?
Well, at this point.
Or do you have to, have to lose society?
Well, certain stuff is like the mold, you know? You don't know mold.
No one's supposed to be allowed to have water service until there's been safety inspection done on a house now.
Okay.
And when we initially put it in, there was so much kickback from the landlords and everything, we kinda eased into it and we told them that we are gonna get tougher through the years and which, so we're able to bring this year to council that we're gonna even stiffen the rules we have had so far and try to make even better properties out of all of them. Not that we don't have some great landlords.
Right, oh, no, I, I like my landlords.
Yeah, it would be, how much is.
My house is different than others, you know?
Since, like, two thousand fifteen or two thousand sixteen, we've been asked it. It's changed drastically.
Okay.
Yeah, prior, prior to that and, and, and now though, right, what you said, Mr. Shaw, um, a, a person can request their home be inspected. If they're, if they're. If they're, if they're upset or concerned, they can come to city hall and request an inspection, correct?
Yes.
So, so there's, there is that, but not every renter knows they have that ability. Not every renter knows they have that right to request that. Okay, anybody else have a question? Mr. Johnson.
Franklin Johnson, two twenty-five Sonnen Street, Glade Water, Texas. Uh, Robert just brought up the word unity, and that's where Glade Water needs to be. We need to be, we, we need to be together as a whole, not as, as a community. Uh, we have a group in Glade Water called Unity Glade Water, which, uh, Robert Johnson's a part of, I'm a part of, and Brandon's a part of. And we need everybody to help us on anything that we're trying to do here in Glade Water. That includes Juneteenth parades, that includes Martin Luther King marches, that includes, uh, giving away, uh, school supplies to the kids, uh, what does we do, Brandon?
Yeah, we just got through doing our big, uh, back to school bus ride.
Yeah, back to school bus ride, you know? So, you know, we need, you know, your help with that, uh, especially with the back to school, uh, 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 giveaway. So, uh, like I was saying, unity is what Glade Water needs. I mean, we got a great football team this year, and I know pretty well, everybody gonna be there Friday night. I mean, black, white, brown, whatever, everybody gonna be there Friday night. That's unity. So we need to bring that same unity that we go to that football game with. We need to bring it to our city council, we need to bring it to the town hall meeting, the town hall meeting, and we need to bring it to our churches. And I don't only just that, we need to bring it to our churches. I mean, you can invite me to your church, I'll come. I can invite you to your church, I hope you come. You know, unity is what Glade Water really needs, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Johnson.
Save the worst for last? No. Uh, my name's Mark Carpenter, I've got two, three addresses in town, but I'm not residing here right now. But I was taking a, kinda writing down some notes about what we, different people love about Glade Water. Um, the three that I'm highlighting is the volunteerism, uh, we talk about that, and I think that's very, very prevalent in this community. Um, G I S D, I, I, I think, uh, we do talk a lot about the good things. We just passed a thirty-five million dollar bond, if that's not putting your money where your mouth is, I don't know what is.
Yep.
And it's, uh, uh, do you, superintendent's doing a great job, I've heard, I haven't heard one bad thing about him. Everything I've heard has been positive, you know? And, uh, the, the, the thing that I'm the most impressed with tonight and in the last few months, and, and JD pointed out, I don't know if you noticed on the, on the bullet points, they talked about a progressive community. That is a new thing for Glade Water. When I moved here, the word progressive was not in the vocabulary. And I'm so thrilled to see that. You're seeing some new people, new blood, it's not all good old boys that graduated from Blue Ridge, from Blue Ridge, uh, model school, from, uh, Glade Water High School. Uh, you know, I ran for city council mayor several times, I, I was told I, I could never get elected because I wasn't big. I said, what do you mean, big? I'm six foot four, two seventy, I was born in Glade Water, stupid. I said, oh, okay, all right. But anyway, this progressiveness is really refreshing. Um, you know, uh, I don't like traffic, so that's the thing I like about Glade Water. Uh, I, I do like Getco and the work they've done, uh, I'm kinda in the same, you said the, the, the A and the B thing's been going on since the chicken and egg. I think it came on when I moved here in two thousand and five, I'm the, I guess I'm the chicken. I don't know.
Well, I'm not the egg.
But that was under a, a, a totally different board, a totally different director, so I was pushing for it then, because the research I was doing back then showed of all the economic development corporations in the state of Texas, the overwhelming majority of them were B corps. And there had been some that were A corps, they got converted to B corps, but I couldn't find a single example where it was a B corp that converted to an A corp. So that kinda told me that the progressive thing to do.
Also too, but if you look at that, a lot of those are converted from A to B, were cities that were in trouble.
Well, okay, but, uh, anyway, uh, I know we disagree, but, uh, what's nice, Mr. Green, is we can disagree without being disagreeable. And that is also a new thing in Glade Water. Because when I ran for mayor, it wasn't nothing agreeable about, you know, this newcomer daring to challenge someone that had been here for a long time. Um, I also, uh, like the idea of shopping local, I shop local every chance I get, you can ask Mike at Exxon, I'm loading up on lottery tickets at this point. I'm not, I'm not, I don't want somebody else to win that money in another convenience store. And I mean, loading up. I, I really hope somebody wins it, if it's not me, I pray somebody else wins it real soon, so.
He actually said if he wins the lottery, he's taking care of the city's debt, so everybody.
That's coming down here. Oh, yeah, that's gonna be all kinda, uh, uh.
True, perfect.
Look, if I win one point six billion, eighteen million ain't gonna kill me.
Everybody say a prayer tonight.
I, I don't drag God into my gamut.
Stupid, no sales tax.
I'm saving that for health and family and some other stuff. Anyway, um, yeah, so shop local, and, um, uh, the bedroom community thing, I think that is a, a excellent goal for Glade Water to be. I'm not opposed to jobs, I like jobs, and I really like retail, so I don't have to leave town to go buy. And the, the economic impact of retail, I think is, is, is as good or better than industrial, because you get the retail, you get the sales tax on it right away, you've got, it helps draw people to move here. If, if, if you have to leave here to go get everything, it's hard to draw new people in here, and I would love to see Glade Water grow to, you know, the size of Kilgore. So, talking about dreaming big, you know? That's only a double.
It's the same size, not that long ago.
It could be more like triple.
Yeah, and, and not so much the higher taxes and fees and the high debt load, I'm a big critic of that, I believe in paying as you go, it worked in my business, uh, I think the city can do that, and not just this government, I mean, it's everywhere. I mean, the federal government, they don't, they don't pay as they go, they don't even have a budget, I mean, they just, you know, run a deficit.
Sounds good.
Yeah, uh, and I don't like that. Um, and, but it takes resources to provide services to a town. You can't have a good police department without taxes, you know? Um, uh, you can't improve the streets without revenue. So I, I understand, but I, I just think when you take on debt for anything other than an emergency or an absolute need, not a want. Wants are for when you have the money to pay for them. Needs are the only thing I would ever, if I was on the city council, I would vote against any debt unless it was an absolute need, uh, until we got out of debt. And then when you get out of debt, instead of spending, I don't know, a hundred fifty-two, a hundred thousand a year, or whatever the debt service is, I don't know the exact number, use that number, use that money, put up a, build a, a capital improvement project, uh, fund, and when you need stuff, it's paid for. The city Tyler's doing it, they've got a capital improvement fund, and most of the stuff they do, there's a big sign that says this project was paid for. Greg County's been doing it, Judge Bill Stout is a pay as you go, we've got the reserves, we don't spend money we don't have type of guy, and I think we can get there. It's gonna take a couple, three decades, but I think we can get there, I hope we can get there. Uh, the other thing, boards, I, I'm on the airport board, that took an act of Congress, um, because before, you know, it's great to hear, let's get citizens on board, we've got, we've got forms, fill them out. But I'm telling you, when I moved here, there was so much resistance, if you wanted to go along, to get along guy, you didn't get on a board. And you were attacked personally if you weren't one of that. And I got battle scars to prove that. But once I got on the airport board, I had people tell me, oh, man, gee, you, you, you're not near as bad as we thought you were, we thought you were gonna tear everything up. No, I, I listened to both sides. I think that's the greatest thing about JD Ship as a mayor, he will listen to both sides, you know? Um, and I'm gonna wrap it up on, on the, on the garbage pickup, we need to be progressive. Every city worth a darn has got those large trash cans, and Republic is a great outsourcer. They do a great job, not just for Glade Water, but for other cities. And, you know, to have to get a guy out of a truck and empty garbage cans is like nineteen eighty. We need the large cans, we need a guy, a machine that picks it up.
The garbage bin, actually, the garbage truck, actually.
Okay, well, uh, when I moved here, and, and we do it twice, we do it twice, uh, a week, pickup, but we don't have recycling, and, and, and a progressive thing, we need, we need curbside recycling, and we could do it at little or no additional cost, what we'd have to give up is we, we'd have to pick up once a week. But my wife has a house in the Woodlands in a fluid area, and guess what? They pick up once a week, and they've got recycling bin and a garbage bin, and we need to do that. And one other progressive idea, we need to have, uh, district, uh, voting for the city council. The people, the, the minorities in Red Rock and the south side of town should be able to elect their own person. I can tell you for a fact, Sonny's on here now, but before that is Coach Derek, and I think the black community should be able to vote for their own representative, and not be told this is who's gonna represent you. So, those are things I've always felt, and I haven't changed, so thank you.
I forgot to add one more thing I like. I like the Glade Water Fire Department, the Glade Water Police Department, and the Glade Water Public Works guys, they all work their butt off, whatever money you give them to get paid, they're taking, and they go do their job.
Yeah.
If you've been out in the wintertime, when you see a, when your water pressure goes down a little bit, that means somewhere, Nick Cartahan or somebody's waist deep in a hole full of ice cold water. Fixing it and getting your water turned back on that night, not, call us, we'll see you on Monday, we'll see you on Tuesday, just, they're out there with a flashlight, and get it, get her done. The PD and the FD do everything they can with the, with the resources they have, so thing that Mark mentioned, that you gotta have money to spend on those sort of things, we gotta make sure we have that money. Before we, we can do these other things, but we can't spend a lot of money on them right now, because we're, we have to admit, we are where we are. We cannot look at the past, but we are where we are right now. So at least going forward, we gotta at least stop being in the past.
That's right.
And stop going, we just have to throw our arms up and accept it, well, we, we're there, but going forward is not just taking a step, it's changing the direction we're going, where we're going to. And this group right here is saying we can do that. In the past, I didn't know what a lot was going on, because I wasn't the guy that went and sat at the city council meetings, I, I should have been. I, I, I beat myself for not being that guy. But now I'm getting this information, and I'm seeing it, and everybody in town is getting it. They also get the Facebook thing, those people get mad, and it's easy to be mad on Facebook, 'cause you type it once and you can't take it back. So if you're mad for a minute, you're mad forever on Facebook. And so, we have to watch that too, but those, those three departments, they'll do, they'll take it, take a letter to Garcia, whatever you tell them to get done, they get out there and get her done. And I'm proud of those guys, and we gotta figure out a way to keep those guys, and maybe get some more, maybe find a different way, the volunteer fire things, maybe we've been talking about, I'd rather we weren't there, because I think we're too big a town to have to count on that. But we have to make real choices, and you guys are making them now, so I appreciate that.
Well, I will tell you, on the volunteer, one of the reasons why we kinda started, um, with that is because we actually are able to apply for grants that we can't get.
And we have to accept reality.
Right, so that we can't get if we don't have volunteer fire departments. So, it helps us on many different levels to, to have a mixture of the full time and part time and the, um, volunteers, so.
You have to be right there, you gotta do what you gotta do to. All the way in the past, I was, uh, went down and voted for every city council election that you were in, I voted for the other guy, because I didn't see anything happening. I voted for, I think, every one of you guys, but if you were in there more than like five or six years ago, I probably voted against you, and I probably would do it again based on what was happening then. When I got my liquor license, the city council kind of had this little fistfight up there in the middle of it. I was getting, I kinda, wow, this is interesting, I didn't know that was how this worked. But, but the thing is, both the people that were arguing, were arguing because they cared about what was going on. They weren't just doing the, gotta be big, get along, get, get along, get along, all that, they were arguing about the point. So I guess that the point is, the city council was doing something they didn't need to be in. A liquor license is solely determined by the T A B C. The city injected themselves in as part of a zoning way to do it, but they didn't have to. But the city council discussed that, and they, they talked down the person that said that, said, well, we, we, we heard you, let's go in and vote. We're doing that now, and you're listening to the people out in the community more than you were then, and that's why I'm, now probably, it's gonna be harder to get new people on now for me, because I see people that are doing something, I'm sticking with them. So, I thank you guys too, and you guys too.
Anybody else?
You talk about volunteerism for the fire department, I've been reading in the paper, my name's Vince Phillips, I live at twenty-eight sixteen Burneyside by the weather room. Been seeing something in the paper, long view, about the E S D coming in. I don't see, I'm, I don't know, I'm, I guess I'm looking at it different. Fire department already paid by the taxes here, I don't understand why Glade Water needs to be in the E S D, White Oak, Cross Warren, City Union Grove, whoever the yes. But we're already paying taxes for that. I hate to see our taxes go up two to ten percent more. We're already taxed enough in this town. Volunteers, we, we need them, but you gotta fund them. I used to work for the fire department in Glade Water from seventy-six to eighty, after eighty volunteers went away because of the funding. It takes about five thousand dollars per person to outfit these guys. And if you get ten to fifteen guys in there, you're talking substantial amount of money. And, but volunteerism, I would, I would go back to volunteering. I mean, I retired after thirty-two years, but the money right now is not there for volunteers. And the E S D, I just got a problem with the city funding the fire department, bringing more money in, that's where I have a problem, and taxing us more, and, you know?
The mayor, out of all of this, throw me some more about that, what's going with that?
Uh, well, we were, uh, hoping, and, and we think it'll happen, there'll be a, a joint meeting between the four communities, the councils, to ask, uh, questions, uh, to get those answered about how, what the impact is gonna have for each community, all of us in the same room. Uh, for us, what we would intend is that we would, we would bring our tax rate down over time, uh, to, to make up that difference.
So who would be on the E S D board, if there were, if this was to pass?
Well, that's, that's still to be discussed, uh, but it would be a, a board that was probably, probably first appointed by the commissioners court, but then later, uh, it would be elected positions. Uh, and I believe that's, uh, that's what has initially been discussed. Uh, but again, this is in its infancy, and so we're, we're all still worrying, uh, about the impact.
It's not something that's gonna happen in thirty to sixty days, it probably.
No, no.
This will be an election of the public, the public will have to vote on this today, if it continues out, uh, that is the hope right now with that, just so we can kinda push this forward, the council did take steps the other day, can join in that as a, uh, move forward effort, to look at the prospects of it, just to kinda let you know the, the four entities have taken up and done the tax values on that, and currently at ten cents, that ten cents over the whole area that all the fire departments currently cover would be a little more than what their current budgets are. So it would be self-sustaining on day one, if it all got up and going and after everything that going. Just like you said, we know across the board that not all the fire departments are up to the same level. So, the city's is also looking at taking and continuing funding for a year or two to help them get a platform set, a base set. And then at that point, hopefully our growth, we'll talk about it again, the funding side, the growth would come in, and that will drop back. Immediately on this passing, for us, it would be a reduction in cost. Because what we're trying to do out of this would be pulling the EMS in it as well. So it'd be EMS and FART, right now, that's ninety thousand dollars for us to have that ambulance sitting down here, plus our building.
And you could have the city generate the revenue from the EMS.
Well, no. Well, it wouldn't, it'd still be, that would, that would fold over to the E S D. The E S D would be responsible for that, but we feel like us and White Oak both pay this. So if we pull that together, that's a mechanism to start formulating one area there, so that cost should come down a little bit, should, in theory. Same thing, we're looking across the board on the fire department, White Oak's looking to go pay. So if they go pay, they know the cost, 'cause we're paid, we can tell them it costs a million dollars to run that fire department. So if we can go in there in the first year, we get that thing up and going, our cost comes in. So now that opens up a little bit of money to help here, but we're still helping the fire department. It kinda gets that reserve account y'all been talking about to get built up a little bit. Couple, three years into it, we can start backing off of that, or at least not raising the taxes anymore. Things are not getting cheaper for us to run. I mean, you know, insurance and everything else, we all get to deal with that. So, it's gonna go, but this last year, the council, this is two years in a row, the council has not raised the taxes here. So, they have streamlined it to that point. And the ghost is back.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. But, uh, that is just where we're kind of going on this, trying to, we're trying to put this board to make sure that all our, all our dots are dotted and Ts are crossed, to make sure that this is a function that the community as a whole wants. Right now, we're paying for services outside the area that they don't pay nothing for. So, this is a way to help get them people to pay a little bit to help do this, all the way across. That map will be coming out shortly as we get a little further out there, so you can kind of see the whole area. But it is currently, all the areas of the four, the three cities are, or four cities and three departments run, they're whole coverage here. So, it's not just the city limits of each of these, so it's everyone's area out there that's not paying anything right now. That is the hopes of it.
And this all started, go.
Well, yeah, my wife's here, can't get me, so I guess I gotta leave. It's kind of like the shared economy, is what I'm talking about doing. And that is the smart way to do it. I mean, we all got computers and smartphones, we gotta get with the program and the shared economy, 'cause it's got a lot of costs. It's why Ford stock is so low right now. Everybody worried about not finding their own car, having to share one.
Hey, Mark, thank you for your, thank you for your comments.
Well, I appreciate it. Keep it up, man, keep it up.
That's exactly where those conversations came from, is that as a city and, well, actually with the Glade Water leadership team, I think, we were talking about how we can cut down costs by coming with shared services. And so, even the animal control issue that got brought up a couple of times, that's something that we're very aware of, and we one-hundred percent agree with you on it. It's an issue here in town. Problem is, we don't have the funds. And so, it's one of the conversations that we've had, as well as how, you know, how in the future can we develop shared services with the towns on maybe that issue as well. And so, it's just that we're not the only city in the budget crisis. That's one thing that we really figured out when we just got back from TML, is that, um, all the cities are facing these issues. And so, it's what we call creative financing, right? We have to start thinking outside of the box and joining forces, and so this is one area that we're tackling first.
But doesn't that create a problem to Upsher County?
You're talking about the ESD? No, we, we have, uh, worked with Upsher County on that.
The city, the city itself is not in the Upsher County ESD. The area outside, like Union Grove and background towards Big Sandy and stuff that we cover, we currently are in contract with the ESD to provide that service. So, the city does get about forty thousand dollars a year for providing that service. If the ESD is formulated, that money would go strictly to the ESD as well, on that part of that service.
Let's eight oh five, we add one more question.
I got, I just wanna say something, and I know we're running out of time, but, um, then when I got on the council, then we started doing the liaison with different groups and stuff, and the liaison was with the Economic Development Corporation with Getco. And I feel like it's incumbent upon me also to be highly educated in whatever I can, and try to learn as much as I can for those that, who chose to vote for me, and to make decisions based upon data and based upon, uh, truth and, and everything else. So, I really spent a lot of time on the economic development. And there's no such thing as a four A or four B. Those have been gone for years. I didn't know that, but I've been studying, that's gone. Um, and, uh, so I, I didn't care whether it's A or B or Z or X or, I don't care what you call it, whichever's the best for the Glade Water, I'm for it. I don't know. But as I, I went and studied some things. I went and joined TEDC, which is Texas Economic Development Council, with my own money. I paid in, it's not cheap at all, but I paid in and went to, uh, started to go to a, uh, more of the classes, and Robert offered to take me, 'cause he'd all be over there teaching in Richardson. So, I rode over there with him and come back, so I saved my gas. But, uh, anyway, uh, you know, I've done a lot of research, and I'm still researching. I have another course I'm gonna try to go to in Bastrop, that's on the Economic Development Corporation. It's a three-day course that TML offers, and, uh, because I think it's important to really, really know. And, uh, what I've come up with is, all that has changed. It's, uh, don't exist anymore. We're the best right now that we could probably be. Uh, because unless Glade Water hits above twenty thousand population, we can do everything that a B Corp can, legally, by law, and it's all there, and, and all the things we can do, plus we can do the A, so you don't lose some of the things there. And then, um, uh, also, you know, I found that the path has changed tremendously. And then one of the other things, I'm a real estate agent, and I do a lot of deals and stuff and see things, and, uh, if this company wants to come into Glade Water, wants to buy, but they may be in competition with another company or someone else on a building, we've gotta do a sixty days, we've gotta do a, a, a public hearing on that. Nobody signed a contract yet. They may lose out, but they've gotta tell everybody at sixty days in advance if they're coming in. I'm gonna tell you, Mr. Greenwood wants to go buy a house, and he's finally been waiting forever to come buy this house in Glade Water, and all of a sudden it comes up, we're gonna get a contract on it right away. We don't wanna wait and let everybody else know that you're fixing up this house 'cause you're gonna lose it. Somebody else might get in there, offer more money, somewhere with a deeper pocket. And that would be devastating to our businesses here to try to bring them in if they haven't got that opportunity. I've got a girl just bought a house in Glade Water, been on the market for less than a week, because we were waiting and waiting and waiting for the right one. And there's a, a couple who are buying these old, wore-out wood frame houses and old rent houses, and they're fixing them up nice, very nice, the right way, and they're flipping them. Bought it for like twenty-one thousand, sell it for eighty-five, boom, and we can get it there. We can afford that payment, you know? She's a single with a son, and she can handle that, and it's a really nice place, cute little house. And what I'm saying is, is when, uh, you know, I, I've reserved what I, and I said the same thing, we need to be a four B and all that, but I said that out of my ignorance. I'll be honest with you, I didn't know any better. I really looked at it, I didn't wanna listen to what somebody else said, or what a, a Getco may tell me. I wanna know for myself what is really the right way. And I'm gonna tell you, we really do have the best way right now, because we can help bring in those businesses without having to do public hearings on every single one of them, and, and, you know, could run off. Some people don't like the law, Mark. Law want to come in, do a public hearing, then run it off. You see what I'm saying? Everything's gotta be telegraphed, and that's not always the best thing to do. So, I want a slot skis in town, and somebody else, I'm, damn, a slot ski, get him out of here. So, I'm just saying, uh, I, I'll be trying to really spend the time there and, and understand that. And I want you to know that, and I'm gonna continue to, continue to study it and look at it. If there is a better way, then I'll be all on board for it. But, um, and I'm certainly, uh, doing that. The housing, I agree with, the housing is a big deal. But if more will do that, like this couple, if they're able to do it, they're able to make money, take some of these houses, then give them reasonable enough, go on there, flip them, and be able to make that money. There is a ability to do that. And there are buyers that will do it, by the way. In Glade Water, houses sit on the market, 'cause they need work, and they weren't going too much for them. Or they may have too much, you know, I'm not saying they're greedy, don't take me wrong. It's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that that, that owner may have all that much into it, he has to have that certain amount, and that happens most of the time. But what I'm saying is, is if they're nice, they'll sell fast, they'll be gone real quick.
And they go on the tax rolls that do not.
They go right on the tax rolls, and at a much higher rate than that twenty-one thousand dollar house, who, it, it, what their tax rate is, is a whole lot more than eighty-five. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say, so.
Thank you. Any of the other council members that could add anything?
I'd like to say something. That was, that's awesome. Everything, uh, everything we discussed tonight. I was like a, a lot of you, I've lived in Boston and a lot of big cities, but ultimately, my wife and I chose to be here. Glade Water really does have, uh, and I'm touching on a little bit of what everyone has said, that, that really resonated with me. Uh, we have charm, rich history, sense of community, um, and we really do need, uh, to celebrate all of these great characteristics that we have. We do need to, to treasure our past, um, but like, uh, some of you have said, we need to embrace the future. We need to embrace new investments, um, welcome new businesses. That way, Mrs. Nelson can go buy her dress, and then go down the street and eat some ice cream. You know, that's the only way we can really elevate, uh, the standard of living and the quality of life that we have. It's like Mr. Nelson touched on, the council can't do it all. The city can't do it all. It's really on the backs of our residents. It's, it's up to all of you, um, and everyone else around here to really get together and make all of this happen. And like Mr. Johnson was saying, it's all about unity. We need to really unite, um, and get together so that we can make everything that we talked about happen. The council and the city, uh, can help, but ultimately, it's, it's really down to the people. So, thank you for, for all of you for being here and having such great ideas, and, and, it's really fantastic. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yep. I have a, a few comments. I listened to, uh, everybody's comment, and they always well and good about their businesses, and, uh, and most of all, I've, I've heard it over and over again about shopping the local. And, uh, and I've heard some of the citizens say, well, what do we have in, in the, in the town hall meeting of last week? Not, not, when I say this, don't take it wrong, everybody don't want antique, or something different in the city other than antique. And also, we talk about, do we ever look at the citizens' part of it? The one who have paid taxes, property taxes, to live here as well as the one that's in business? Are we giving them anything? Are we giving them, are we bringing any cooperation, some efforts, uh, some jobs to help us? Give our people's job that are already live here? And, uh, I heard someone, only this man here, I think, that run the pizza place, said we have turned away in the past like, uh, larger businesses like Walmart and others. And seem like some people are against Walmart being here, we don't have, I don't want it, want it here, whatever it might be. I'm just bringing this up, 'cause I didn't hear much on that. And, and we have to look to the peoples that is already here, that's living here. All of these other things that we have on the boat is well and good, but we need some industrial here to give our people's job, to help them system for our tax rates. Thank you.
I'd like to say something on that. One thing that I think, um, citizens need to understand is that the city, uh, if we don't have control of the land, so if we don't own the land, then we can't bring in the industry. So, we have to, a lot of the issues in the past, when people say, you know, well, Walmart couldn't come in, this couldn't come in, this couldn't come in, there were issues with property owners, not, um, uh...
No, there were exact issues with mayors and city councilmen also.
Right, but I, I want...
As long as I'm mayor, there won't ever be a Walmart in this town.
Right, but I can't, I can't... Right, which I'm, I'm not, I'm not negating that that was not an issue as well. Uh, but that is something, you know, for citizens to understand, that if, if Getco or the city doesn't own the property, then...
You can't make them sell it.
Right, we can't force landowners to sell their property at an affordable price that a, um, business would come in at. And so, like with him, thankfully, it wasn't, uh, a property that Getco owned, and so Getco was willing to work with, you know, your company to do that. So, um, one goal of ours in this as well is to really, um, help citizens understand what we can and can't do. And what a huge role in everything that gets done that the citizens have, you know, so.
Maybe we can't do them in a double night to go along.
No. We can't, Mr. Nelson.
That was all very, very, quite a few years ago, like thirty, forty years ago. The Walmart in Gilmer, the Walmart in Kill Door, both of those were after the Glade Water Walmart blew away. Those cities, by the way, were both almost exactly the same size of Glade Water at that time as well. And so, you can see what time of the years have done. Uh, and I don't necessarily want to be the size of Kill Door, Tyler, any town. Just the, the burden can't devolve solely onto the properties, as you mentioned. There's not industry and other things going around, and that one is, everybody loves or hates Walmarts a lot of times at the same exact time. And I'm just missing them as the big name, if you could almost throw out there. It could've been whoever was gonna build something over here where Subway is, and whatever happened with that. I've heard five thousand different stories, witches, warlocks, all kind of things were involved in why, why it didn't happen. But those kind of things falsely pushed away, that's all I was against. There, there's real things, that, they could've come around and said, that's really not gonna work. We decided no, because it could've been, become something good that's happening. They're gonna for-lane the loop around town, for-lane two-seventy-one. The people building that might've went, well, that's gonna be all, our business not gonna go around us, and we're not gonna, we don't need to build there. That could've been a, something they looked at. For me, I'm looking forward to that for-laning stuff.
Well, Dr. Robertson, did you wanna, did you have a comment?
Well, I'll just say, uh, let me bore the city council, 'cause they've heard me say this many times. Now, I don't mind boring the city council. I'll tell you that, uh, you know, everything we wanna do, and we wanna do so many things that will benefit Glade Water, make it better. We all wanna live in the best town we can live in, right? Well, many of the things we wanna do takes money, right? And our tax base now, it's, it's too small to do many of the wonderful things we wanna do. So, we have got to have different ways to bring in income in the city other than just sales tax and, and the other couple of ways that we, we earn revenue for the city. So, uh, we do need industry, and we're happy when, when businesses come into Glade Water. We need to promote that, we need to, to, I think, step out in advance and build a, an industrial park with all of the utilities, so that when we go out to these corporations, we can say, look, it's already there, everything you need, all you gotta do is come to Glade Water. And it's gonna be an easier sell than if we have nothing to offer, right? So, I, I've told this story a hundred times, this is where they'll go to sleep, so...
It's a good story, though.
Pardon me for this, but I grew up in a town like Glade Water, but it was in Arkansas, in northeast Arkansas. Paragould, Arkansas is where I grew up, and, uh, exactly the same size, sort of the same type of downtown. I mean, it was very similar to Glade Water. We had a, a Getco person, of course, it wasn't Getco up there, but we had a, a economic development person who, who wanted to grow the city, wanted to make the city better. He knew that we had to have more revenue there, so he was really all about getting, getting some industry to come in, at least on the outskirts of town, right, to provide jobs and give us a much bigger tax base. And nobody wanted to do it. They didn't want new people coming to town. They, they were afraid of the industry and what that might bring, and they wanted the town to stay exactly like it was in the nineteen-fifties. And it did, and it still is today. But this economic development guy grew tired of that attitude, so he moved over to a little town somewhere north and east of Jackson, Mississippi. I don't even remember the, the name of the town. Went over there with the same plan in mind, talked to his city council in a, in a town smaller than Glade Water. They got all fired up about it. He would get on his Harley and ride to Chicago and ride to, uh, other big cities, and talk to corporations and say, uh, look, we've got this great area, we've already got all the utilities in. He sold them on the idea of coming to this little town. And to make a long story shorter, uh, they must have six or seven, I guess you would say, not major industries, but very big industries today. In fact, big enough it made Sixty Minutes, uh, two or three years ago. Sixty Minutes came out and did a story on this, because the town had nothing before, and now it's got four, five, six industries around, around the city. Uh, so that encourages me. I mean, my, my little hometown wouldn't do it, but he went to another place even smaller. They got behind it, and, and great things happened. Uh, we need to do something similar in the future. So, we've talked about it many times, we, we need to reach out, we need to have some infrastructure in place, and someday, hopefully, uh, we can, we can encourage more companies to come into Glade Water, not only for, for increased revenue for us, but, but to provide jobs, right, for, for the citizens of Glade Water. So, we're working toward that goal too, so, you know, hope you can get behind something like that. We, we really need to go down that road as far as we can as well.
All right, well, we're gonna close up the open discussion there, and, uh, go over what was mentioned at the first town hall meeting. So, what, what do you love about Glade Water? Uh, hidden gems, a community with hidden gems, a community, community with small-town charm. I think, I think we've heard that, uh, here as well. Uh, encourage cultural competence within the business community. So, a business, uh, serves a community, know the community you serve. We're talking about maybe having a, a workshop for businesses in town concerning that. Offer programs and workshops such as home financing for the first home buyer, first-time home buyer. So, another program, uh, we will probably be bringing around. It was done a couple of years ago with, uh, Theo Malonzo. Uh, we have nothing to do for children, that was another one of the comments. Uh, promotion of our assets, the downtown, the lake, the ballpark. Promotion of all community events, that was something that was brought up as well. Need more family-friendly events, uh, something that, what you're talking about there. Um, the south side of town has been overlooked in infrastructure improvements, so we have a, a part of our community that feels overlooked. Uh, diversity of... Uh, diversity of business within the downtown district. Uh, this goes back to a comment, you know, more uh, more uh, diversity of business in the downtown, different types of businesses in the downtown area. And, and then a desire to see a beautification of the downtown district was also mentioned at the first town hall meeting. And what we'll do is uh, you know, we'll have another slide for town hall meeting three at St. James uh, uh, tomorrow night. And so um, it was worth going to all the town hall meetings because you get to hear the input from everybody. And there'll be some tweaking of the slides, some additional slides. I think, I think from town hall, meeting one to now, uh, we added three slides and tweaked a couple of them because of the input. Uh, so what were the Glade Water uh, leadership team ideas? Develop a clean city program. That's something that we heard over and over again, clean city. Develop an infrastructure improvement plan. Again, re- reoccurring themes between town hall meeting one, town hall meeting two. Um, GEDCO, develop a career center. That's something that's being discussed. Uh, I believe, I believe those guys had to, had to leave. But um, you know, the library, community libraries are evolving. So I think in small communities, uh, libraries are also taking on an additional role of, of a, of career centers for uh, the community. Develop a marketing strategy for our community. That's something that Mr. Green had mentioned as well. Uh, the school, school's got the plan. School's ahead of us. As a matter of fact, the town hall meetings, I stole the ideas from Cedric Clark. So he, he had four town hall meetings uh, for the school. Thought that was a wonderful idea. Um, and again, uh, there, there's, they're one step ahead of the, of the city here. They've, but they've already got a plan. They've got a Vision Twenty Twenty-Five Plan that's coming soon. And they're gonna talk about that more. They'll release that after the school sees the results of our town hall meetings. So they're gonna make that a part of, of their plan. Um, so where can you get information about the, the city? I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, uh, Christian Allen over here, uh, is, I'm gonna ask him to come, come here and uh, discuss some of the uh, social media sites and, and city websites that he administers. And then he's also gonna discuss Nixle. So if you would like to come forward, Christian.
Well, he's gonna stand here and discuss some. Okay, sure.
All right.
Uh, the mayor handed me a list, everything that we have access to as a city-controlled entity. These are all of our websites. This is where we release any information that we want to get out. We wanna try to reach as many as possible other than the local newspaper, which has done, you know, phenomenal job reaching out beyond this. Um, except for GEDCO maintains their own website and Facebook, but we still have, you know, we share their information, they share ours. Anything as far as notices, as far as upcoming events that we know about or we need to share or things with the school that we need to get out, these are the sites that they're gonna be on. And we're gonna make sure that this list is available and shared again on this site, on our website. Anyone that sees it, please be sure to share it and get it out, mention it to others. Cause this is how we wanna get. Absolutely, yes ma'am, yes ma'am. And we wanna make sure that, you know, if y'all see something on here or y'all want to see something on here, get the information to me. I have the city address, I have, you know, contact through the city hall, any number of people in this room that I'm in touch with. The Glade Water mayor is gonna be able to share it and get it out for y'all too. I mean, these are community things that we wanna do, not necessarily in advertising. You know, they're in business to make money. We can't advertise on our city stuff. So it nee, it needs to be s, community contact, but we're happy to get it out there.
Ready for next one?
Yes, sir. And Nixle is our alert system. This is, we share this and we have access with, the school's able to share on this also. It's just like the blackboard system for the school. If there's something of vital importance, this is where it'll go out. The more people that can sign up for this and get text messages, email, and in a worst-case scenario, a phone call to your actual phone, home or cell. Um, we do share community information on here. We share just today, the meeting tonight on here. Um, if we're made aware, if I'm made aware of road closures, things like that, I'll try to put it on here. If it's things that affect your water, um, boil water consequences, anything that would be of your interest that we know you want to know about, you just didn't have another method of seeing it, we're gonna try to get it out here on, on this for you. There are many ways to sign up. The fastest, easiest, if you're on a cellphone, is to text the word Glade Water to triple eight, triple seven, and it'll sign you up, it'll walk you through it. If not, please visit either gladewaterpd.com or cityofgladwater.com. Both have major links on there that you can sign up right away. Uh, I'm able to answer and help with any questions anyone has on that. Again, but you can reach me through City Hall or see Allen at cityofgladwater.com.
Now, uh, now do we, did we, do we have the enrollment cards here? Is, is they?
I didn't have any enrollment cards to bring though, so the, the.
You can just take your phone to you.
Yeah, well, the, the thing is that you can write your information down and me put it in. It's something that you're in control of signing up. I can, I can easily show you how to sign up and show you how to get off if it's something that you accidentally signed up. But it's not, I can't interview you in. This isn't a list. We maintain it's a private list that is secure, controlled. The only way this is accessible is through information out of the PD and we'd actually have to make a request to get your information. So we're doing this just to keep you informed.
Uh, I have a question about that. Can I do something like that? Make a little sign to put by the register that says if, if you're a local person and you have not signed up for Nixle?
Absolutely.
Can we do that? Okay.
This is a nationwide, this is a nationwide program. We have our list that we send to. But anyone in the country can sign up. They use their zip code to sign up and it actually puts them in groups that are associated to their locale, not to just ours.
We have a lot of local people that come into ours for, and that would be really.
And we, and I have some flyers from the PD that we actually just got through. The, the school allowed us to send home with the students to take to their parents and give the same information. And I can bring you some to put down, absolutely. We'd love, we appreciate the offer.
That's an awesome service. They didn't have that in the colony and that is awesome.
I love it.
This is, this is something that our, our police department, our chief believes in strongly. I've, I've made the attempt to grow it and grow it and grow it. So I mean, share the information if you can. Because again, the more people that we can't reach on Facebook or we can't reach on the web or we can't reach with the mayor, then, you know, this is just one more thing possibly that we can try to get in touch with.
Anybody have any questions for Christian Allen about Nixle?
Okay.
Good, yep. All right. All right, words of wisdom by Walt Disney. So you can, you can dream, create, design and build the most wonderful place in the world, but it requires people to make the dream a reality. Okay? You don't build it for yourself, you know what the people want and you build it for them. Times and conditions change so rapidly that we must keep our aim constantly focused on the future. So I think these three are uh, pretty fitting for what we're trying to do here in our community, these town hall meetings. So uh, what, what do you hope to come out of this? A unified community, as Mr. Johnson said. Unity's very important. Community united in purpose. Perhaps we'll call this Glade Water. Operation Glade Water United in Purpose. Pretty always gets the head of the operations. Uh, you know, so, so that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna, we're gonna come up with a game plan after the town hall meetings. Uh, based on, that is, we had as our joint meeting, based on the town hall feedback and see what we can do moving forward. And uh, so next October, how'd you do guys? That's the question you can ask us. How'd you do? Where are you? So thank you guys for attending. Uh, we have some upcoming town hall meetings, uh, two more, Tuesday, October twenty-third, six thirty PM. St. James Baptist Church, Monday, October twenty-ninth, six thirty PM at the Glade Water Center, Center for Community Education. That's the small building in front of the high school. So uh, again, here's, here's an asset. I told some of you guys before the meeting, I wanna let you guys know about the library. Remind you that the library's here. I'll introduce you guys to the Center for Community Education, the building. I was only introduced, introduced to it maybe two or three years ago. So that's a, that's a neat, neat facility we have there. Um, so thank you guys for coming. Thank you for investing in Glade Water. And you guys that have moved, transplanted to Glade Water, similar investment. Yes, ma'am?
Where's St. James Baptist?
St. James Baptist Church is over uh, in Red Rock. It's across the uh, across, if you go to the rodeo grounds, make a left there across the rubber tracks, the church is immediately there. All right. Hey, thank you guys. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Ms. Oh, hey, don't forget we have a board of packets here if you, you wanna sign up for city board. Okay, much of your, second, all favor? Hey, thank you for coming.